I have a call to order this regular meeting in the Lions Township Board of Trustees, Bay Second, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Approval meeting agenda.
I'm sorry to say this, but the MTA brought up some additions to the agenda. So we would like to add item K, which is a computer purchase proposal. Item L, which is a backup mechanical plumbing inspector. M, a backup building inspector. And N would be a public hearing for the budget to be set for next month. Also, under new business, item D, Parks and Recreation Director appointment. That description should be changed to only be a recreation director appointment.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda with the additions as noted.
I have motion by trustee Curly, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Approval minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 4th, 2022, and April 12th, 2022, which was the budget workshop as presented. Second.
I have motion by court Candell, supported by trustee Curly, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Public announcements. Public. Consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established county protocols, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests at or prior to the meeting, in which at the event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for some discussion in consideration on our agenda item numbered equal above. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call of those present in the room.
Invoices to be paid for the month, I have a total of $247,154.78 in open invoices to be approved and $297,697.15, which was mid-month payments, for a total approval request of $544,851.93. I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda with bills totaling $541,851.93.
Second. I have motion by treasurer Hahn, supported by trustee Clifford, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
New business. I would say EMS Week of Proclamation 2022, Mr. White.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I have before you this evening just a proclamation that we're asking the board to approve, recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week as May 15th through the 21st of 2022. This is nationally recognized by the American County emergency physicians to recognize the work done by our EMS professionals throughout the year. Certainly, you know, this has been another unusual year for us as we continue to manage the COVID pandemic and the additional work that our EMS crews did with regards to not responding to emergencies, but as well as the 16,000 vaccines that were done here in our community and the provision of monoclonal antibodies, which were the treatment for the COVID-19 virus. We're not completely out of the woods yet, but certainly in a far better position than we were even a year ago, as I stood here before you, and we look forward to continued improvements in that area. With that, may I forget what the sentence had to be read or not? So, you read it while you're reading.
EMS Week Proclamation 2022, resolution 2022-2, to designate the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services EMS is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury protection and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas emergency medical technicians and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas emergency medical responders are supported by emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, educators, administrators, researchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of EMS teams, both career and part-time, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And finally, with this proclamation unanimously encourage the community to observe this week and join us in recognizing and thanking Emergency Medical Services Professionals. I would like to make a motion that we approve the EMS Week Proclamation, resolution number 2022-2.
I'll second that. I have motion by court Candell, seconded by treasurer, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Item B, sidewalk waiver request for Rosales Farming Garden, 19-06-27-200-017. 60529, Grasham. Mr. Cass.
Good evening. Mr. Jenner-Nalik is here, and we have Rosales who'd like to make a presentation.
Good evening. Gary Anokan made a proposal for Rosales. Previously, we had obtained a site plan approval for this development in the buildings under construction, and this request, we're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk along the Grasham Street frontage. And in my correspondence of April 11th, I indicated that my clients are willing to sign the agreement of report form that they would put the sidewalk in place, that the agreement would run with the land when the adjacent parcels would put in their sidewalk. So the frontage, the driveway course is here, the sidewalk is shown on the drawing. To the north and the south, there's no sidewalk. Further down to the south, Semcows built their facility. They did put a sidewalk in, but there's no connection, there's no connection to the north. So in your minutes from last month, I obtained a waiver for Ann O'Janice with reference to his facility, 27th Mall Road, his storage facility there. So we're just asking for a similar waiver so that when the sidewalk program goes into effect or somebody puts in on the adjacent pieces, that my clients would put theirs in at the same time, and then there would be a connection. In the meantime, if the sidewalk's put in, it goes to no adjacent piece that has a sidewalk in.
Steve, do you have a recommendation on this one?
Yes, I do. We, Grasham is our development corridor. We have numerous developments planned or coming in. We've never waived the sidewalk request along Grasham, so I'm recommending that we now waive this one.
Yeah, it's our basic request that we would sign an agreement of report form to require the Rosales or somebody else, who'll do it in the future, to put the sidewalk in when the adjacent parcels put theirs in, then you'd have a continuing program of continuing sidewalk. Otherwise, this sidewalk is a cost for them, but it serves no useful purpose because it's not connected to any currently existing facility. And it's probably not going to be placed there for a while because there's no place to be submitted to those adjacent pieces that would be home.
So as soon as somebody to the north or south was willing to put a sidewalk in, at that point in time, not both, would your client be willing to put it in at that time?
Oh, yeah, so your question is if one to the north did it, but not to the south, would we do it then?
Yes.
Yeah, his response is yes. Joe's here.
Yes, I see what you said, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so like if the piece to the north or to the south, put theirs in, they would put it in because then they would be connected. And that would be in the agreement.
Yes, I would. I would hold it would be.
Right.
I believe the motion is in order.
I would like to make a motion that we table this item for further information. The letter was just received a couple of weeks ago. We were gone for a week for MTA, and there hasn't been sufficient time to look into, like Mr. Cass says, we've not approved any variances along Grasham Avenue. I'd like to be able to have a little bit more time to actually look at what the history is.
I'll second that motion.
I have motion by court Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
So that the end of your first meeting in June?
Yes.
You know what date that is?
Do you want to have it filmed there for me?
June 6th.
6th.
June the 6th? Thank you. At 6:30?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you need any additional information from us, feel free to contact me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, Parks and Recreation Ordinance Amendment. So last month, we established the Parks and Recreation Committee. This amendment establishes how many members are on it. Four members are appointed from the general public. One and three others are from the township. One is the board of trustees liaison. One is the liaison from the planning commission, and the other is the recreation director. This also defines.
So you would be grabbing one member of the public?
No, four. There's the three additional, so it's seven members additional. And so it also defines when they will meet, bi-monthly. So every other even month, sorry, every even month, so February, April, June, so on.
Are these volunteer planners?
Yes, these will be volunteer. And they will, of course, come to the board shortly. If there is no further discussion, I will make the motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Ordinance Amendment in order to allow my township to proper perform.
Second.
I have motion by the chair, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Parks, uh, sorry, Recreation Director employment, may the court?
Yes. When looking at a recreation director, we kind of took into account several things. And basically came down with, we have a current employee who is working in the planner, with the planner on code enforcement, Kathleen Sheehan. And we feel that she would be a perfect fit because recreation also is going to fall under, Parks and Recreation is going to be overseen with planning, obviously, they work together. She's already working with the planner. So it is my recommendation that we appoint Cat Sheehan, Kathleen Sheehan, as the recreation director. Second.
I have motion by court Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Item E, Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Ordinance Amendment, Mr. Cass.
You currently have a book saying licensing ordinance for medical marijuana. We're making, we asked the attorney to make some changes, minor changes to that ordinance relative to distancing requirements, how to measure special land use approval that can actually apply for medical marijuana prior to submitting an application for special land use. There's wording in there like trailer parks is now correctly called manufactured housing, that kind of thing. Very minor, or is that simply too big of a changes?
I make a motion that we accept and adopt the changes to Part 25, Ordinance 3, Ordinance amending the medical marijuana facilities licensing ordinance. Second.
I have motion by court Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Adult-use marijuana facilities licensing ordinance, Mr. Cass.
This is a new ordinance as opposed to the last one. We've received rumors requests from our applicants, licensees or provisional certificate applicants, that have received medical marijuana certificates in the past that due to these changes in the state law, that they're unable to compete by only selling medical marijuana and are asking that we consider allowing the sale of recreational marijuana. From a zoning and planning standpoint, there's really no difference. We can't tell from outside the building what the sales transaction is for, whether it's for medicinal purposes or recreational purposes. It's still marijuana being distributed in a facility. So we're asking, we're recommending that we allow recreational licenses for existing medical marijuana facilities or all facilities that have received provisional certificates.
I'll make a motion to approve the adult-use recreational marijuana facilities licensing ordinance.
I second. I have motion by treasurer Hahn, seconded by trustee Clifford, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Item G, Planning Commission Liaison to Zoning Board of Appeals. So I hope everyone got a letter in the packet. I am nominating Karen Turchi to the position of Planning Commission Liaison to Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe Commissioner Turchi has the experience with on the planning commission that would be quite beneficial to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Karen Turchi to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a planning commission liaison upon the resignation of liaison Michael Benara.
I'll second that. I have motion by the treasurer, seconded by the chair, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendell?
Nay.
Clifford?
Uh, aye.
Curly?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item H, employee number 318, status change request.
Employee number 318, we are currently using and have been since the last election as a fill-in person in the clerk's office. We have experienced an uptake in FOIA requests that we're helping, we're, there's so many things going on with the charter accounts changes and those types of things that I would like to recommend that we put employee number 318 as a 30-hour-a-week employee working. She works for the clerk's office, but she works for everybody. She does whatever anybody needs done. I will make a motion that we approve employee 318's status change to a 30-hour-a-week employee. Second.
I have motion by court Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item Y, voter identification card mailing request.
The county and the state have just finished redistricting for voting purposes, which means that it is our responsibility to send out all new voter ID cards to every registered voter in the township. So we have gone ahead and gotten a couple of votes from different mailing systems instead of us trying to do all the printing and mailing ourselves. We reached out to three companies, KCI Printing Systems and Whitlock Business Systems. We did not hear back from Whitlock. We did hear back from KCI, and their estimated total was $3,964.45. Printing Systems was $3,745. And just as a item to note, at $0.40 a piece for postcards, if we were to send them ourselves and not through one of these companies, it would cost us $3,390 just to mail them out. So we are recommending that we go with Printing Systems at $3,745.
I make a motion that we accept the voter's identification card mailing request to Printing Systems for the total of $3,745.
I'll second.
I have motion by trustee Curly, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Item J, Mytel Telephone Partners Support Renewal, may the court?
Mytel is our phone system, our partner support, our renewal is obviously one year of the renewal. Since we have not had the opportunity to get a new phone system or new phones yet, I would like to recommend that we agree with, that we approve $1,399 to High Tech for the Mytel Partners Support one-year agreement.
I make a motion that we approve the annual renewal contract with Mytel Telephone Systems in the amount of $1,399.
Second.
I have motion by trustee Curly, seconded by treasurer Hahn, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Curly?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item K, computer purchase proposal, may the court?
Here we go. Because of the last two years of COVID, we have not replaced our computers on a regular, we had a schedule in which we were replacing a certain number every year to keep everybody up to date. We are now looking at a backlog, so I would like to propose we have contacted High Tech. They have 10 PCs in stock that we can get, 10 PCs totaling $10,257.50. I would like to request that we allow for the purchase of the 10 desktops to catch us up in our rotation.
Just a question here, I really don't have a problem, but by law, should this be bid?
Problem with bidding it is, nobody's got them in stock. I can't call anybody and get them in stock. So how long you want to wait? It's, they technically do not fall as a capital high outlay item because they're less than $2,000 each.
I got you.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of 10 computers from High Tech at the cost of $10,257. Second.
I have motion by treasurer Hahn, supported by trustee Curly, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahn?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item L, Backup Mechanical Plumber Inspector Contract Proof, please bring it up.
Good evening, board. Coming in front of you this evening for information updates and follow-ups. Couple of months ago, we had a special board meeting where we made some adjustments to our independent contractor agreements. This evening, we are coming forward and asking that the board approve the latest independent contractor agreements. The first one being Plumbing and Mechanical Backup Inspector. This contract has been approved and signed by Brian Ben Stlacken. And I'm going to slaughter this last name, I'm so sorry. Brian Ben Stlacken Beck?
And Slamburk.
Slamburk?
Slamburk, yeah, there you go.
Just almost as bad. So this evening, I request that the board consider, go ahead and make the improvements. This will make us full with a backup inspector. We are still going to be working for additional inspectors in that department for plumbing and mechanical. This person can do plumbing, mechanical reviews, and the inspections. With that, in addition, I'm also asking the board to consider and approve an additional independent contractor agreement. This is going to be also for an additional backup inspector for the building inspector. And that person is Melvin Nick, that is in your documents that you have in front of you this evening. There's any questions?
Who sat on the interviews?
Scott, these were not interviews. This is the emergency meeting from two months ago.
Oh, okay.
There was no interviews. This is a qualification through the state requirements.
Okay.
I think we have to approve these two separate motions.
Correct.
The way they're written, so with that being the case, I will make a motion that we approve the contractor, Brian, Brian Van Slamburk, as the backup mechanical and plumbing inspector. Second.
I have motion by court Candell, supported by trustee Curly, may the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Kendell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hallowell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item N Backup Building Inspector Contract Proof.
I make a motion that we approve Mel McNaught for Backup Building Inspector as he has signed an agreement to the contract.
I'll second.
I have motioned by trustee Gerle, supported by Treasurer Hallowell, and Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Gerley?
Aye.
Hallowell?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item N Public Hearing.
Sure, just one last thing. Both of these after tomorrow will be effective tomorrow, once we have them signed.
They're both signed, we just need to sign them here so they ask.
Yes. Tonight.
Close the meeting tonight.
We just have to have them signed, but they'll be effective when we're ready to go.
Right, correct.
Item N Public Hearing for Budget. We're looking at the Senate Public Hearing for the Budget, that's our June meeting, June sixth at six thirty PM.
Was that the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
I have motioned by the Chair, supported by Court Candell, and Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Gerley?
Aye.
Hallowell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item eleven Public hearing. Item twelve Call from the Board.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session at seven oh two PM.
Second.
I have motioned by Court Candell, supported by trustee Gerle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I make the motion that we return from closed session at seven twenty-six PM.
Second.
I have motioned by Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallowell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item fourteen Attorney.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, seven twenty-six and a half.
I have motioned by Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallowell, and Deputy. All in favor?
Aye.
This is being adjourned.